How many of you were in line yesterday to get your picture made? Man. Where the rest of them? I'm pretty sure there were sixteen thousand people in that line. It was pretty awesome. Anyway, Merry Christmas. Yesterday was a bit of a festive, interesting, and fun opportunity for us to kind of get to do some things. Often we come and we're all suited up and go to work and do our thing. And it's good to go, get to go hang out in a little less stressful environment and get in the holiday festive mood. So I hope all of you, even if you weren't in the picture, that you're kind of getting in the festive holiday spirit and one of both Thanksgiving and appropriate reflection about the blessings that we have to live in this country. And from my perspective, to get to work in coolest agency in government. So anyway, thank you all for being a part of that. And I know there's a full contingent of people here in the auditorium. There's a, I suspect, a pretty good viewing audience out there online. So to those of you that are out watching online, glad you're here. Lots has happened in this room over the course of the last year, when you think about it. We had the President of the United States on this stage at one time. We had former Secretary Moniz here, as I kid him in a couple of ways. Ernest Perry Moniz, as I reminded him, that we have more in common than just good hair. And... So anyway, lots of things have happened here. And I told Ernie, I said, "Ernie, very rarely in the country today do we have public hangings." But I said, "We're going to publicly hang you." And so he came back by the other day and saw his picture up in the hall. So anyway, it's... First day, I think, on the job, I got to come in this room and share with you all that greatest job I ever had was being the Governor of the State of Texas. And that's still true, probably, well, it always will be true. But the coolest job I had is now to be the Secretary of Energy and get to work with some really extraordinary men and women. We had the lab directors in here yesterday. And again, getting to share with them just the fascinating things that they do and the effect that they have on people that they'll never meet, but the real positive impact, the responsibility that each of you have in harnessing America's abundance of resources. Again, it's a really, really fascinating, interesting place to work and things that we do together. I look at this as you all, on a daily basis, have a profound effect on people that you'll never meet, on their lives, on Americans, on people who live around the globe, who the work that you do affects their lives. And when I wake up each morning, I feel pretty blessed and honored to be able to have the privilege of working here and being around really dedicated public servants. And I see it walking down the halls. I see it in the interaction with the folks up in that horseshoe. I see it, you know, in a lunchroom yesterday with folks with all kinds of varying backgrounds and interests, but a collective effort together. So we're starting to, you know, see, those of you who've been around here for a bit, Kathy Peary came by today, and Kathy's worked here for forty-five years. And she and Ted came by today and we took a picture and we were just talking about. And I said, "Kathy, you've kind of interacted with a lot of different people in forty-five years." And she said, "Yes." I mean, she was here before the Department of Energy. I mean, it's just, it's... My point is, those of you who have been here for a while, you're seeing some new faces. And those new faces are part of the leadership team that I've been able to put together here. One of the things that I'm proud of in my life is that I had the opportunity to gain some pretty good management experiences as the Governor of the 12th largest economy in the world. I'm not perfect, but I think I'm pretty good at analyzing good talent and then empowering that talent to go and do what they are capable of doing. And I want to introduce a few of the individuals that I've brought into the department today and give you the opportunity to hear from them over the nine months that I've been here now. Dan Brulet's been here four months, three, four months, something like that. And you're going to hear from Undersecretary Menzies, you're going to hear from DeBarre, you're going to hear from, well, you would hear from Bruce Walker. How long, Bruce has been here for, I think, about a month, and we finally got him. But he spent substantially more time in Puerto Rico than he has at headquarters. And he's actually out talking to the WAPA folks about some projects that they're working on. But Steve Winberg, you're going to get to hear from. Steve's Assistant Secretary for Fossil Fuels. We just came back from, I think, nine days in the Middle East, in Saudi Arabia, UAE, and Qatar, which it was a very productive trip. It's... Anyway, he's going to be able to share with you some insights, not just about that trip, but about what's happened in the fossil fuel world. I'm really excited about these folks. They bring some, you know, Dan's going to share with you, he was here before. This is, he's a retread, so to speak. And so every mistake he made the first time around, he won't make again. True. But one of the points that I've shared with each of them is that the quality of people that they're going to get to work with, they're honored to be able to lead each of you in your respective areas. And again, Team DOE has impressed me with your dedication to the mission, to subject matter knowledge. I mean, there are some brilliant, deeply knowledgeable men and women in this agency in your particular areas of expertise. And the professionalism, the focus of the mission that I've observed over the past nine months speaks volumes about what I tell people on a regular basis is the greatest asset that we have, and that's the people of this agency. You know, I'm a veteran. The approaching forty percent of you all that are veterans, I think, makes this a bit of a unique agency in that sense. I had the pleasure to meet a good number of employees of this agency, you know, one hundred thousand plus, counting our contractors across the enterprise, if you will. And I'm not even close to making all the national labs yet or going to some of the places where our folks operate. DOE mission, obviously internationally, we, you know, as we travel across the country and we'll see and meet a DOE employee in some places that you, from time to time, I was telling Steve Black, you know, I met some folks from time to time, and I was kind of like, "Now, explain to me what you're doing over here and that we work together." And then, once they explain it, I have a better understanding of just how broad and deep the tentacles of the Department of Energy go globally in the interest of America. Our mission spreads internationally. And, again, the effect that we have on people's lives around the globe is a powerful thing. But whether you're home or whether you're abroad, you know, whether you're here at headquarters or whether you're one of the labs, you know, at some site promoting our interest in some unnamed place, I can't tell you how impressed that I've been. My interactions with our team has helped me understand how we are rising to meet the challenges that we have, where we can do things better. One of the things that I asked the lab directors in our first meeting was, "If you see regulations that come out of headquarters that is either costing you money or time, or you think is basically, you know, more of a hindrance than it is a help, let us know those things." And that's true here at headquarters. If you see, you know, this rule was put in place, this regulation was put in place, this requirement was put in place with maybe a good idea in mind, but the fact is, it's not being productive, it's actually hindering, then flow that back up so that we have the opportunity to do a better job. We all know that in dealing with the many responsibilities this department is charged with, we grapple with cost, we grapple with schedules, with performance in a variety of ways. In my confirmation hearing and in subsequent meetings in Congress, I maintain that we have a moral responsibility to make real measurable progress on legacy management. The level of commitment we apply to these issues of our past must be matched with emerging issues of today, like cybersecurity, developing tomorrow's specific scientific breakthroughs, whether it happens to be in supercomputing, energy storage, or, you know, something way past my imagination. In the beginning of the administration, the President, he directed the Cabinet to be mindful of how we can... of how we can improve our effectiveness in service to our nation. And I don't view that as anything other than a clear directive. And I don't consider to be, this gathering here is a kind of one-and-done checkbox, you know, we had a, we had a meeting and go back to, got that done. That's not what this is about. It's going to be a constant duty to challenge ourselves, to look at what we're doing, see how we can do it better than we've done it before. As such, I want to be sure that we're structured most efficiently to meet our challenges. I've already mentioned cyber as an emerging threat that's really high on our agenda. I mean, read today's clips. The top of the DOE clips is a, is a story about cyber and the challenges that the world faces. And you are going to be a key, if not the key, agency of government that addresses this issue. After sitting at the helm of this department for the last nine months, looking across our enterprise, it is clear our efforts can be more focused and more closely aligned with our evolving mission. As I've met with many of you, and it's obvious that redundant layers of bureaucracy are making it difficult to reach timely decisions and engage in immediate action to address real challenges and threats. And we had that conversation as late as 15 minutes ago, didn't we?
(laughter)
So, not calling you out or nothing, but...
(laughter)
But the point is, our contracting practices, our emergency response capabilities, those are areas that I believe that would benefit from some added focus and leadership. To help ensure our workforce is being, I should say, is best organized to meet our current responsibilities and to adapt to our future needs, I've asked Deputy Secretary to assess our current structure, make recommendations on how we might be better organized to meet our current mission. And to modernize. I mean, one of our challenges that we've been given is, on the NNSA side, is to modernize our nuclear weapons. And, you know, I don't think you can say we're going to modernize our nuclear weapons if we're not going to modernize our agency to be able to meet tomorrow's challenges. So I'm going to ask Dan to come up in a minute to discuss the initial steps that were going to be taken to continue and build upon the agency's success. And then, the secretaries, undersecretaries, Menzies and DeBarre are going to both come up and give you some opportunities to query them, to ask them some penetrating questions, but more importantly, to listen to your suggestions. So I want to challenge each of you to think about, to suggest ways that we might take our game to the next level. There's a lot of people counting on us getting this right. This isn't just a, this isn't just an exercise. This is about the future of this country, it's about the future of the world. DOE plays an incredibly important role in that. We need your input. We value your input a lot. Your experience, you know where the potholes are from time to time. We don't want to fall back, we don't want to go through one. We don't want to fall in one, we don't want to hit one. And this agency is going to be as good as its people. And I got faith in what I've seen in nine months. This can be the finest agency in the federal government because of the commitment of the men and the women that work here, that count it as a privilege to be able to serve their fellow man and their country in the role that you've been given. So I look forward to continue working with you as we ensure the department remains the very efficient, forward-looking, adaptive enterprise that it can be. So with that, let me introduce to you the Deputy Secretary of Energy, Dan Brulet.
(applause)
Knocking bed.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate that.
Thank you so much for that, Mr. Secretary. There have been many, many outstanding Secretaries of Energy who have served this department, but, oh, he's gone, so now I can say whatever I'd like. (laughter) I'm kidding. I am just really pleased to be here. I'm really pleased to serve this secretary. He brings a level of leadership and a CEO-like quality that I think is going to serve us all well as employees of this department. So I want to echo some of what he said. I've only been here roughly four months, and each day, every single day, I continue to be impressed by the folks who work here. And while I'm impressed, I can't say that I'm terribly surprised. I saw it during my first tour here. The secretary mentioned Kathy Perry. I don't know if she's here. Is she here? Is Kathy here? I don't know if she's here. But anyway, Kathy is a wonderful individual. I got the chance to work with her during my first tour, and I think she exemplifies the quality of employee that we have here. You know, when the secretary called and he asked me to be the Deputy Secretary of Energy, he didn't need to use his considerable political negotiating experience to get me to say yes. I'm here because I love this place, just pure and simple. It is the best place, in my opinion, in all of the federal government to work. There is no place that I can think of within the federal government that affects, as the secretary said, so many lives each and every day. So like the colleagues that the secretary mentioned that we're going to have on the stage, undersecretaries DeBarre, Menzies, it is a privilege to work here, and it's an honor to be back here. Now, some of the things, when I was here, you know, the first time, look very similar to me. Those white halls, those white floors, it's still the same. Those things have not changed. But there are some things that have changed. What has not changed, as I said earlier, is the quality of the employee. You are, in fact, the best and the brightest that America has to offer, so it's an honor to be with you. What has changed, however, is what the secretary has alluded to. The world around us has changed pretty dramatically, not only since my first term, but since the beginning of this department. You know, we recently celebrated our 40th anniversary of this department. And for 40 years now, you know, the size and the scope of the department's mission has changed and it's evolved. And as I mentioned, this has happened as the world itself has changed and it, has changed and evolved, and candidly, sometimes not for the better. The threats that we face today as a department were almost unimaginable 40 years ago. Secretary mentioned cyber. Who would have thought that they would carry around a smartphone 40 years ago? You know, we couldn't have imagined that. We didn't know it was coming. So in order to address those threats, we have to continue to change and refine our focus here. Today, we're announcing an intention, our intention, to modernize the department and to deploy some of these amazing resources that I've referenced to address those pressing challenges. I know that that creates anxiety with you. I know when you mention the words reorganization, change, those things create a lot of anxiety, not only with the folks in the room, but the folks throughout the complex. So I want to just take a moment, step back, and tell you what this modernization is not, so that we can just take that off the table. This modernization involves no, 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 N-O, no layoffs, no RIFs, and no terminations. We are not making changes to the NNSA. We are going to look at their operations and begin to work with them to make things more efficient. This announcement today has no impact whatsoever on the NNSA. We are not selling off the power marketing administrations. So, I've gotten a couple of emails about that recently. We are not making changes to the national laboratory system. And we are not making change simply for the sake of making change. This is a purposeful and a thoughtful action that we're making today. Now, what is it, then? What is this modernization? Let me just spell it out for you in three easy, simple steps. We will get the DOE, the Department of Energy, back to its statutory framework. That's what we're doing today. We will, once again, just as we have had since 2005, three undersecretaries. There will be an undersecretary of energy, there will be an undersecretary for science, and of course, there will be an undersecretary that runs the NNSA. We are changing some of the functions underneath of those undersecretaries. The undersecretary of energy, S3, is going to focus on energy policy, applied research technologies, energy security and reliability, and it will also include certain DOE-wide management functions. The undersecretary of science, which is S4, will focus on supporting innovation and basic scientific research, including the National Laboratory Operations Board, LOB, the Office of Science, and the Office of Technology Transfer. This change, this one change, returns the department to its historical, historical organization, and it makes the department's structure consistent with our organizational act. Second, we'll increase efficiencies and outcomes in our environmental management program. Cleaning up the legacy sites from the coal war is one of our key missions here at the department. We will move the Department of Environmental Management and Legacy Management under the S4, the undersecretary for science. In doing this change, we will achieve greater efficiencies by utilizing the project management capacities within that organization. They are very good at that. We will utilize that, we will utilize their contract oversight abilities, they are very good at contracting as well, and importantly, we will apply the scientific expertise that resides in the Office of Science and our national labs to these important cleanup sites. These types of efficiencies will improve, we hope, and we pray, and we will accomplish this, they will improve our outcomes much sooner, and they will manage our costs much more effectively. And they will do these things with the highest degree of safety possible for our employees and our contractors. The third step today, we will rename EPSA to the off, we will rename EPSA the Office of Policy. So we're taking away the full title of what was known as EPSA. The Department of Energy has long had a policy office. When I was here the first time, it was in the, it resided under the Assistant Secretary of International Affairs. Secretary Muniz organized the new policy office, EPSA, to support the priorities of a previous administration. This new policy function will be named simply the Office of Policy, and it will reside within the S3 organization, the undersecretary of energy. And it will support the priorities of this administration. Given that the S3's office will be charged with energy policy, we feel that it's most appropriate to put that office under Mark's leadership. Now, the intent for this first step in a reorganization, if you will, and there will be future changes coming, as every administration does, they are not going to be radical changes, they're going to be, you know, what you might expect in terms of aligning the work product. This first step aligns the department again with its statutory mission under the DOE Organizational Act, and it simply changes this department to meet this administration's energy policy needs. It candidly allows us to be the Department of Energy. We're going to be bold on energy policy. You probably have followed some of the news, you probably have seen the efforts that we already have underway, there will be more of that. We're going to be very bold in this department. That is what we are charged to do, that is what I am charged to do as the deputy secretary. That is what this secretary expects, not only from me, but from all of you. So with that, I'd like to invite the two brand-new undersecretaries of energy and science to join me on the stage, and we will answer whatever questions you may have for us today. If you have a question, please raise your hand, and there are microphones on each side of the room, a microphone will be brought to you. Thank you for your time this morning, thank you for joining us. I sincerely, sincerely look forward to working with you over the course of the next few years. Thank you. (applause) It's bright up here. No questions yet? You guys are not shy. Is this one? I know you guys are not shy, and if you don't start asking questions, I'm going to start pitching you on CFC. I'm wearing my socks today. (laughter) I'm wearing my socks today. CFC is a wonderful, wonderful organization. I'm literally going to pitch you for the next hour unless you start asking me questions. It is a wonderful organization, I'm not kidding. Ah, great, we do have some questions from outside. It is a wonderful organization. If you haven't considered contributing, I would appreciate if you would. I have belonged to CFC for many, many years, and I can think of no better way to help others who may be in need. Clearly, all of us in this room are fortunate to be employed, to, you know, be able to take care of our families. We may not have everything we would like to have, but I can reasonably be assured that we have more than others. So to the extent that you are able to give, we would ask that you consider that. It's a fantastic organization, a fantastic way to share a little bit of the benefits that we've been blessed to receive. Come on, guys, I'm going to start asking these questions here off the, oh, there we go. Look at that. I didn't realize you'd get tired of my pitch that quickly.
Hi, good morning. My name's Eric Hawke, I'm with the Office of Management. I have a question about your strategic plan for the department. I'm wondering if you're planning to update that, and if so, what timeline you're looking at?
Yes, is a short answer. It will be updated. We have begun some processes internally to take a look at that. I want to put together a small team that involves both the, you know, the two undersecretaries, obviously, along with the administrator of the NNSA, and some of the career folks here, so that we can take a closer look. We understand what the administration's priorities are, but as you can well imagine, you know, a plan needs to involve not only the thoughts and the big ideas, it also needs to involve the implementation of those ideas. And at this point, having been here only 120 days, while I understand what the department does, and I understand what all the boxes are on an organizational chart, and I understand what the functions are, I'm not going to pretend to understand exactly what the implementation plan of this administration's priorities should be. So I'm going to need your help in developing that strategy. I want it to be a collaborative process, I want it to be an interactive process, and I want it to be somewhat flexible. Strategic plans are, you know, long-term, and they look over the horizon just a fair amount. But in my view, they should remain open to change from time to time. We have to measure our progress against a strategic plan, and oftentimes, we'll find that our progress is not what we would like it to be. In that case, we either have to up our game and try and meet those strategic goals that we set for ourselves as a team, or we have to acknowledge that our goals are not appropriate and perhaps redefine them. It's an ongoing process, is a short answer to your question. I've just begun it, so I can't give you an answer as to what it is, but I can tell you it's coming.
Good morning, Deputy Secretary and Undersecretary.
Good morning.
My name is Jay Stroup, I'm with the Office of Science. One of the things that veterans do from each branch of our services is learn IT and how to handle cybersecurity issues and meet the challenges to meet the mission. I was wondering, is there any plans for you to increase or to look at leveraging more of that talent from our veterans?
It's a great idea. The military community, and I was an Army veteran, I wasn't smart enough to use computers. They put me on tanks, primarily because I was about four foot eight, and I could fit on the tank.
I was wondering, is there any plans for you to increase or to look at leveraging more of that talent from our veterans?
It's a great idea. The military community, and I was an Army veteran, I wasn't smart enough to use computers. They put me on tanks, primarily because I was about four foot eight, and I could fit on the tank, that's how I got there. But the short answer again to that is yes. As the secretary alluded to, many of you are veterans. This is an organization made up, and I don't have the exact numbers, perhaps HC is with us and can correct me if I'm wrong about this, but it is my understanding that well over a third of this organization has military background. And I would hope that as we move forward and we look for talent, that we look to the military first. I know that within the, you know, government service, if you will, there's a veterans' preference, that's a very important item for veterans as well as for us, because we do get good talent there. But I would hope that as we go out recruiting, that we look to the military community first. I think it's a, you know, it's, they are at the cutting edge, much like we are here within our Office of Science, much like Steve Black's organization in Intel, they are at the cutting edge of these newer technologies. And I think they have a, you know, not only a theoretical and intellectual understanding of the area, they have a very practical understanding of the area. They know what the bad guy looks like, what he thinks like, what he might do next, and that's the kind of experience that we need here at the Department of Energy as well. Yes, sir?
Hi, I'm Bruce Diamond with NNSA.
Hey, Bruce.
My question is, as you look to modernizing, are you going to look at the concurrence process that DOE uses?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Yes. The concurrence process looks exactly like it did 15-plus years ago when I was here. And--
The documents are still in there.
[laughing] I believe it. I believe it. I believe it. I tell you, it is, that was not, that was not to, how do I say this politely? Not what I wanted to see when I walked back in the building, I couldn't believe those green folders were still here. We must modernize the concurrence process here. And I, where's Wayne? I just saw Wayne, where's Wayne? Wayne has been tasked with helping us do exactly that. There is no reason in my mind why we can't do this electronically. There's no reason in my mind why we can't do this much, much more efficiently and in a timely way, and give people access to, you know, the information they need. We had a couple of instances, you know, in the last couple of days where, you know, things have literally been sitting on people's desks for 90-plus days, and we see them on the very last day that the material is due. That's just unacceptable. You know, we can't operate that way as an organization. There are also, you know, I notice on many of the concurrences, you know, there are folks on there that have limited equities or in some cases, no equities, and we're simply, you know, passing these documents along to folks that really shouldn't, you know, have to take time out of a busy day to review. So we want to streamline that process pretty dramatically. Don't want to take anybody out of the process that needs to be in the process, obviously, but we don't need to solicit the input of 100 individuals on things that are, you know, really matters of routine. So we do want to, we do want to improve that. Thanks for that, I appreciate that. Yes, ma'am?
I'm Paula Fricki from Headquarters Procurement Services. With all the terrorist threats out in the world and everything, I've been reading a lot about electromagnetic pulse attacks that can be launched on a country by a rogue terrorist with maybe like a suitcase bomb, and I've been reading that our grid is really not protected, that one of these EMP attacks could take us back to the, you know, horse and buggy days within a flash, and we won't have any electricity or any capabilities. And I remember the last strategic plan, it didn't really address this kind of thing, and I'm wondering what the Department of Energy is going to head to do to protect the country's power grid?
Sure. Great, thanks for that question. I'm going to ask Mark to chime in as well, because he is a grid expert. I am not. I know, I know, you know, generally what the threats are, and I can assure you that, you know, through Steve Black's organization and Intel, we know quite a bit about the risk that we face. And DoD and others are deeply engaged in what, you know, we might do in response to an effort by either a state or an individual to affect that kind of a, of an attack. My understanding of EMP is that it takes a little bit more than, you know, what a normal individual would have to affect that, so we expect that it would be a state actor. But I can assure you that it's at the top of our list in terms of not only our Intel community, but also our defense community. And with regard to the specific impacts or potential impacts on a grid and what we might do to protect ourselves from that, I'll turn it over to Mark.
Well, thank you for the question, and indeed, certainly, with all the reports of what's happening in North Korea, all the testimony and the hearings that have been done on the Hill, you know, we are aware that there's increasing threats of a potential EMP. The Department of Energy has been addressing this in several ways now, and it's really not a threat, but it's certainly a heightened threat. You know, we have our Grid Modernization Lab Consortium, for example, which, you know, models these kinds of things, determine, you know, how it is that we can better make our grid resilient. There's research and development that's being done right now on new technologies for the actual grid itself. Wires can be replaced with superconducting film, for example. These may demonstrate a better resiliency to those kinds of threats. The private sector and has been working with some of our labs, Oak Ridge and others, to model these threats, and we have identified, for example, where transformers may be necessary to be stored, the type of transformers, where they're positioned, this is all classified, the locations and all are classified, but, so DOE is working, you know, with industry, and so we're approaching it, you know, in several ways. In addition to the actual, you know, wires and transformers, you need to have generation able to be available to run when the grid is threatened. And, you know, we've addressed grid resiliency in the 403 letter that we sent, for example. One way to have a resilient grid is to make sure that you have available generation that can, you know, that can run, to ensure that people can, that the grid can remain energized where it can function. So that's an important aspect, too. So we're approaching it, both R and D, with the private sector, with our labs modeling it, and with our policies that we're implementing.
Other questions? Yeah, we have one right there.
Hello, thanks for taking questions. My name's Ian, I'm from Energy Efficiency and Renewable Energy.
How you doing, Ian?
I'm doing good. Earlier today, you mentioned that under S4, you'd like to reorganize everything to get back to more of a basic research tilt. In deploying a lot of the new energy technologies that are developed, there's a big valley of death between basic research and deployment. There's a lot of applied research that goes on within EERE, and I'm curious as to what your plans are for that.
Thank you for the question. It's actually an area that we've been focusing quite a bit on in terms of taking the capabilities of all the various different offices on this particular topic and how to move it forward. You know, I think there's a number of different aspects to this that you can think about. First of all, there's a significant amount of content across the various lab complexes, across the various offices, that could, that we could continue to move forward on. We've had a lot of conversations with the lab directors this week and over the course of the last few months, and I think there's a general concurrence that there's a lot of content, whether it's user facilities, whether it's people, or whether it's actual technology and IP which exists across the complex, that we can move forward with even better. I think the last management team that was up here did a very good job of standing up OTT and standing up various different people across a complex, and we want to build on that. And as part of our work, when Mark and myself were waiting for our Senate conversation, confirmation, I had conversations with Lynn Orr, with Steve Koonen, with Dan Poneman on this particular topic and how to move it forward. So we, we've had a lot of conversations about this. First and foremost, what we want to try to do is try to bring together, not by creating a new organization, by bringing together communication on the various people who work in these particular areas. As you probably know, we have people at the labs, we have people in EERE, we have people in RPE, we have people in OTT and elsewhere, all on this particular topic. And, and that's something that we want to try to pull together and try to accelerate on the, on the back of what you all have been working on. And so that's one clear area. Another area that we're working on is how to actually increase two-way communication with people outside of DOE. And there's various different communities, whether in the science community, on the public side, at other universities, or in the commercial sector, about what do we have and what are they interested in. And once again, I think that what we're, what we're going to try to do is, we're not going to create anything new, but we're going to be trying to pull together all the different resources in a more coordinated manner and try to accelerate that.
I agree with Paul. One of the things you mentioned, I'll just build on just slightly, you know, getting these organizations to talk to each other, one of the modernization efforts we want to talk about, in fact, here over the course of the next couple of months, and I'm working with Max and some others on this, is increasing our ability to communicate with each other. What struck me when I came back to this department was that I could not find certain individuals within the department, because there's nothing on my screen that allows me to see what your phone number is, or where it is that you work within the organization. So we're going to start building tools to allow you to do that, and I think through that communication effort, through that collaboration, we are going to bring some serious talent to some of these issues and some of this technology. It's a basic step, I realize that, I'm not going to suggest that that's going to change the world, but it's something that we have to do. We have to be able to see each other, talk to each other, and understand what we're working on, so that we can more effectively collaborate as we move forward on some of these issues. Other questions? I'll go back into my CFC pitch. Right up front. Hey, Kathy?
Hi, I'm Kathy Tripodi. I was wondering if you all could talk about your efforts with the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission and the Notice of Proposed Rulemaking and what we're trying to accomplish there?
Mr. Undersecretary?
Thank you, I think, for that question. For those of you who, you know, might not know, my background is on, you know, energy and energy policy, a practitioner, you know, before the agencies, you know, both state and federal. And your perspective is, you know, generally on specific issues that might, you know, affect specific policies, but you're really focused on the weeds. And so you develop a lot of expertise, you know, in very specific issues, you know, with a general broad sense of, you know, the domestic impact, or at least in certain regions. You come to DOE, and on day one, your perspective changes significantly. Not only is it national in scope, it's international in scope. You see the movement of technologies across the globe, and you see how important it is that the United States be at the forefront of the movement of technologies and intellectual You want to make sure that your domestic policies exist to allow us to continue that position in global affairs, the movement of technology and capital. So one of the first things that hit me was just in the movement of nuclear. Internationally, other countries are moving ahead on building a lot of nuclear, they're looking for countries, you know, that have developed the new technologies. There was a time when, you know, we were the go-to country for that. You want to continue that. In our civilian nuclear fleet, you know, FERC has developed policies over the last two decades, if you will, where we created, FERC created, it's not mandated, electricity markets. And rules were developed over time to address some of the very specific issues that I mentioned earlier, you know, that lawyers like me would try to get the various RTOs to implement and FERC to approve. Consequences of some of these rules, though, unanticipated when these markets were initially conceived and created, has caused our nuclear baseload units to be being shuttered because they're being forced to run uneconomically. They're being dispatched, they're running, they're being relied upon for both energy, for frequency voltage regulation, for the everyday operation of our grid. And yet, the market rules somehow do not allow them to either set the market price or to recover their cost. So what other markets are out there where you can have negative pricing, for example? Does anybody shop anywhere where there's negative pricing for any, anything?
If you find that place, call me. I've got nine kids. I really need to find that place.
You know, are there any markets that allow predatory pricing? Right? I mean, that's illegal in the United States. The Federal Trade Commission enforces anti-predatory pricing. In our electricity markets, you don't have to bid your cost to get to run. So going back to the international aspect, I was fortunate enough to be with the secretary at the trilateral discussions with Mexico and Canada. You talk about, you know, a North American, you know, energy, energy opportunities, both, you know, to go back and trade back and forth with energy, an important export of energy between the three countries, but also, again, development of energy projects. Well, Mexico is developing its electricity markets, and I just happened to be having dinner with my counterpart, and he was telling me about this creation of the electricity markets, and I said, "Oh, really?" I said, "Well, have y'all decided on any rules?" Oh, and he said, "Well, we've been looking to the United States, you know, as to best practices." And they had hired some US consultants. I said, "Oh, that's interesting." I said, "What'd you, you know, what lessons did you learn, you know, where are the best practices? Do you have any market rules?" He says, "Yeah, actually, we do. We've decided no negative pricing." I said, "Oh, well, that's a good idea." Two, when you bid in to run your unit, you have to bid your actual cost, so there's no gaming. And he said, "You know, when you bid an actual cost and allow those that are providing electricity actually recover the cost, regardless of the fuel source, you don't need to develop these complex capacity markets, forward-looking markets." Right? So there's capital available to ensure that you can invest in your future needs. These are just simple things. And yet, you look at some of our RTOs and some of their rules, you know, they allow this to continue. So FERC can change it, and so we've decided to use our very clear authority under 403 to simply direct FERC to address this problem. PJM, for example, has a very involved stakeholder process on changing their rules. They have been trying to have their market rules changed to allow for these units to recover some of their cost. They have petitioned FERC to please force them essentially to change their rules because their stakeholder process won't allow them to change it. And FERC has not done so, and this has been pending for years. So, again, we're trying to encourage them to do the right thing, and so that was, that's really behind the, you know, in part, some of the reasons behind the 403 letter.
I think it also fits with this administration's strategy. I mean, the president has directed the secretary, who has further directed me, as we look toward that strategic plan, to adopt an all-of-the-above energy strategy. And for this president, for the secretary, and for myself as well, that truly does mean all of the above. It does not mean some, or perhaps more, you know, some more favored than others, it means all of the above. And that's the strategy we're going to pursue. So we're going to be pursuing a lot of the work that's being done in renewables, solar and wind in particular, but we're also going to promote and we're going to look for clean coal technologies. We're also going to look for opportunities for our nuclear industry, which is so important not only for the production of electricity here in the US, but the talent that resides in that civilian nuclear enterprise is also critical to our Navy and our Air Force. It is very important that we retain that talent here in the US. So, again, you know, we're going to take these kinds of steps, and I would also add to what Mark just said. What we did with this 403, the secretary's authorities and the way we approached this demonstrates the boldness that he is going to-- demonstrates the boldness that he is going to use to lead this organization. That's a provision that the secretary is allowed to use under our Organizational Act, which is why we want to maintain the structure that was envisioned when Congress created our department. These are the authorities that they gave the Secretary of Energy, and we intend to employ them where appropriate and whenever appropriate. So, in, in a sense, we are, this is going to look like a Department of Energy, because it is in fact a Department of Energy. Questions? Well, like I said earlier, this is not, this is not the end of the conversation, it is simply the beginning of a conversation. And I want to thank you all for being here today, and I want you to know that not only is my door always open, but Mark and Paul maintain a very aggressive open-door policy as well. We live in the building, so it's not hard to find us. Don't hesitate to come and say hi, don't hesitate to stop by and ask further questions about this reorganization or anything else you may see within the department. It is an honor for all of us to serve in government, and it is an even bigger honor for us to serve with you. So thank you for being here this morning. We appreciate you taking time. I look forward to following up with each and every one of you. Take care.